Okay, you're alive. Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the July 23rd, 2020 Village Board meeting for the Village of Woodbury. Why don't we start with the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for those serving around the world that I'll be here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you all. Okay, so first up, this evening is a public hearing on introductory local law eight of 2020 entitled Wireless Telecommunications Citing. I was speaking with our consultant, Mike Musa, who's on about this earlier, and we've been working on this since at the latest, early 2018, maybe even late 2017. This has been a long time in coming. So this law will amend section 310-38 of the village code entitled Wireless Telecommunications Citing. The public notice is printed in the Times Herald Record on July 9th, 2020. So first we'll go out to public comment, then I'll talk about the comments from the planning board and a couple of other things, and we can wrap it up. So anybody in the public have anything they'd like to say about this? Let me go ahead and unmute everybody. Not that many folks out there, but why don't we start with Sandy and Robin?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. And come up with a good name by the end of the meeting, Sandy.
Okay.
All right.
I'm good too, Tim. Thank you.
Mr. Kraus?
I'm fine.
Okay. Mr. Zlada?
I'm good.
All right, Mr. Gerber, Mr. Brady?
All good.
I think that's everybody. If there's anybody I missed, please go ahead and let me know now. What does the dog have to say? Somebody? Okay. All right. So before we close the public hearing, I just want to, I want to go over the comments received from the planning board because I thought they were quite good. I was at that meeting last week to help with the, facilitate the meeting, and the comments I thought were really, really good. So first, what they noted was that all references to a pre-application meeting, they'd like to see deleted. The planning board strongly believes that all meetings with applicant for a telecommunications facility involving any planning board member ought to be at an open public meeting in order to ensure transparency and public competence in the process. And this, and I'm not going to speak for Mr. Gerber, but this does not apply just to this particular local law. That's been their policy in recent months and the past year or so. In addition, given the severe federal limitations on the review period for such applications, commonly known as the shot clock, such a pre-application meeting process only limits the time that the planning board, that the full planning board has to review, consider, and make a substantive determination on the application. So the second of four points is that the definition of applicant should be amended to state that any person or entity submitted an application to the village. The planning board's opinion is that this will more accurately reflect the fact that almost every applicant would be submitted, every application, excuse me, would be submitted by others than a natural person. They want to delete section 310-38G2 on page 24.
And not to interrupt you, but there's feedback coming when you're talking. I don't know.
Who, did you notice who that was? I can mute them.
I'm sorry, I didn't. I can't see everybody at once.
All right, let's take a look and see who's.
I hear some kids.
Well, you know what? I'm just going to go ahead and mute anybody that's, okay, we're good now. I was on point two. Any person, entity, okay, the planning board's opinion is that it's more accurate, like the fact that almost every application will be submitted by other than a natural person. I said that already, and I still heard the feedback. Did anyone notice who that was?
I think it's Christopher Gerber in the bottom. There you go, you forgot to.
Point three. Delete section 310-38G2 on page 24. The planning board is of the opinion that specifically referencing the secret type classification for minor modifications, co-location, or small cells in county or state's rights of way as a type-two action in this code provision could render this provision outdated or present confusion, confusion over its applicability if the D E C were to subsequently modify its type-two regulations, which has happened in the past year or so. So that was a good pickup as well. And lastly, they wanted, they would like us to modify section 310-38G2 on page 27 as agreed by the village's wireless telecommunications facilities consultant. The telecommunications tower should not be of a galvanized finish. It should be a matted finish. I remember that from our discussions. Also, this subsection should be redrafted to include provisions to allow for stealth or otherwise muted appearances of cell towers like tree appearances are applicable or where it makes sense. So that summarizes what the planning board had to say about this. I also want to note that the G M L response has not yet been received from the county, and the 30-day period has not passed, so we really cannot, we cannot adopt this law this evening. So unless somebody else in the public has anything to say, less chance. Okay, so at this point, I'd like to get a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Andrew, trustee Jacomazo with the motion, trustee Eric with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
How about I? Okay, so next I need a motion and a second to accept written comments until the close of business on August 7th, 2020.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, trustee Bureau with the motion and trustee Graziano with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Okay, so let's move on to public comment on agenda items. I'm going to go ahead.
Sorry, Mary again?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want the changes at the planning board to be incorporated into the law for your next meeting, or?
Oh, well, we have a little time. Actually, we don't have a little time. August 7th is the next meeting, or just before the next meeting. My apologies. It seemed like so, so far in the distance.
It's this weekend, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Let's go ahead and get those incorporated. Kelly, can you take care of that to get those changes? And anything else, any other board members would like to see changed at this time? And no, Tara's good. Andrew's shaking his head no. And Jesus, no. Chris, you good? Okay, Mr. Musa, you have anything to add before we move on? Give me a good, sir.
No, other than thanks, thanks for the feedback back in January on this. I think all of you contributed a good bit to it. And again, we look forward to implementing, and I think that's, that's it.
Okay, great. Thanks very much for all your hard work on this. It's a long process, and you did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Okay, so now let's go to public comment on agenda items. I have unmuted everybody. Let's go around the room again. Why don't I just ask, does anybody have anything they want to say on the, on the agenda?
I do.
And that is Mr. Higgins. Go.
So on the agenda you have tonight for this law for water protection, I have, you know, Tim, the coronavirus has made communicating what is going on in the village very difficult to keep up with. For myself, it was a big challenge to join the meeting on Zoom. You know, I couldn't find out what the number was for the meeting, whatever. I couldn't, I couldn't find what was going on as far as in this village. It's, it's, we're kind of in the dark here. The topics as well as the documents and things like that, it's been very difficult to try to find things out. I'm not saying this is your fault, but those who haven't had internet are, are left, they're left completely in the dark. This isn't meant to disparage you guys and what you're doing there. But you got to understand, it's, you got to have some understanding for us and how it affects everybody for this having Zoom and Facebook and, I don't know, YouTube or whatever. It's not your fault, but have understanding for the people. They're not able to keep up with this agenda, and a law is being proposed. I struggle even getting on the line to, 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 to sign up for this meeting tonight. This is my second or third time. But the water quality protection law is a big piece of legislation, and I agree with you, Mayor. It shouldn't be rushed. The, the public has, hasn't known what's going on here on this legislation in spite of your best efforts. The mapping isn't accurate. It's not accurate portrayal of the north end of town, which contains the aquifer and the springs and the tributaries it feeds it. The wording is dubious for allowing mining at any existing facility. It gives carte blanche to the mine to partially, to mine the partially reclaimed south quarry the aquifer sits on. And you have suggested you're not in favor of that various activities. So simply having the mine file for a stormwater permit would be needed anyway from the D E C. They'd have to file that for their operation. It opens the Pandora's box. There's going to be blasting noise. It'll affect hundreds of people all along with clouds and backup beepers and constantly making noise. And Playa and Pepianetti's and the savory, along with every commuter around here will be impacted. Now, I suggest you reconsider the vote until the dubious green light to mining exemption is corrected, along with the map that is incorrect and that needs citizens' review. You have the authority to change this rushed law at this time. When the village objected to the new quarry, it really seemed as though you were against the expansion. This looks like a very easy end-around opening to the solid quarry. I'm sure that's not what you meant to do, but that is what this law creates. Specificity needs to be made to show the difference between the active quarry and the reclaimed, unpermitted, non-active south quarry. People don't want blasting in their backyards, me included. It's going to shake people up. You don't even know the, we don't even know the, I think it's 25 feet from people's property line, they're going to start being able to blast. It's got to be specific, this law, in terms of not greenlighting the very thing that you object to. That being said, if you look at the regulated activity under prohibited activities in this overlay district, item D, they say, "Any such facility in existence as of the effective date of this section must file a water protection plan with the building inspector by August 1st, 2021." Well, shouldn't that be an active mining operation? Shouldn't that, the, the, otherwise, you're not separating a new activity from an old activity.
Hey, Matt, I'm going to talk to you just for a second. Matt, Matt, I'm going to talk to you just for a second. I just don't want this to turn into a quasi-public hearing on the space side issue. You're commenting on the water quality improvement law, and, and most of what you're talking about can relate to that, but I'd like you to just keep your comments to that, and I also would like to address some of the things that you said, so go ahead, please continue.
Well, here's the thing, here's the thing. In this, in this law, it opens it up. It says, "Any such facility in existence as of the effective date of this section must file a protection plan." So what? That's a green light. It should have, it should have, there's only one place in this town that has a mine. It should specify the difference between being active and not active. This needs to be changed unless you're greenlighting it.
Well, I don't like the.
I'm trying to be kind here.
Okay, well, you know, I, I think I've been very patient and very kind with you as well, and I've, I've met with you. I've had many discussions with you. We even spoke earlier today. Let me, I'm going to have Kelly address your specific issue with regard to the mine as it relates to the water quality law. But I do want to address a couple of things first. The first thing you talked about, if I was able to keep up with my notes here, was that you stated it was difficult for residents in general to keep up with what's happening at the village board, at the village in general, and in particular, village board meetings and the laws that we're crafting and passing. I, I honestly, I disagree. I respectfully disagree, simply based on the number of participants we have at our village board meetings. They equal, if not exceed, what we've seen in the past in our meeting room right down the hall from me. And I've not heard any complaints from anybody else with regard to being able to access meetings. Our meeting documents, our meeting laws, means of communication have all stayed the same. You've made appointments with me. I've had many conversations with you. People reach out to me via email, text message, phone calls all the time. So I, I tend to disagree with that, but I, I want to move on. You said, "I'm not in favor." I think what you were referring to is perhaps you're trying to say that I'm not in favor of the mining application. I have reservations about that mining application, which I'll get into in my comment at the end of the meeting. But to say I'm not in favor of the law, I don't think that's what you actually meant, and I'll choose to believe that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you simply, you, you simply said previously, well, in your writing to the D E C, you said that you had concerns.
Sure, of course, we all have concerns. Absolutely. The other things with regard to the mapping, not being accurate and dubious wording with regard to mine, I'm going to ask Kelly to respond to.
Sure. First, with regard to the mapping, we actually just had that updated a couple of weeks ago by the village engineer and the village planner. So that's as up-to-date as they have it. If there's something different, perhaps that can be added on to when further investigation is done. But we did just have that updated by your planner, as the board remembers, in consultation with your engineer. So I don't think that that's any reason to necessarily hold up the local law at this time. So that's.
Where is the public able to see that information?
Yes, that, that's been provided to the village. I'm looking at Desiree, but it was a couple of weeks ago. That's been available.
Is that on the website, does? You're muted, does?
She said she's checking right now to be sure. I'm pretty good at reading.
The other thing I want to say.
How did you know I said that?
I read your list.
Well, well, what I wanted to add to that, though, was that, you know, mapping was one of my concerns two years ago, and that's one of the reasons why we paused the process, because there was some discrepancies between different maps. We did not engage anyone to craft a new one, and the county didn't have anything updated. Things are different now. The county had updated maps that we were able to compare to, and as Kelly said, our planner and engineer crafted new maps specifically for this so that we would have the most up-to-date information possible, so it doesn't get any fresher than a couple of weeks. So we have up-to-date mapping and information. But please, Kelly, you were going to continue with.
Yes, so I also just wanted to advise the board, the, the concern about the mining. There is only one reference in the Water Quality Protection Overlay Act, Act, local law, that mentions mining. It's the provision that was cited by Mr. Higgins, and that is to say that the mining is a prohibited activity in the water quality overlay district. Existing operations are required to file a water pollution control plan by August 1st of 2021. I think that that actually puts another requirement on top of, of the space side quarry as the existing mine in the village, but omitting any references to mining generally in this local law as a prohibited activity, I think could open the door, actually, for an argument to be made that potentially mining is permitted in the water quality aquifer protection, a water quality protection overlay district, which I think defeats the purpose of the, why the board was actually wanting to adopt this was to protect the water quality. It, it's not directly related to this mine, but it's to the village in general, and you're trying to protect the water resources of the village. And I think that having that in there, saying that that is specifically prohibited, except for ones that are existing, which do have some rights to continue, is prohibited.
So, exactly. So listen, I, I get your point. My point is there's a difference between an active quarry and a reclaimed quarry, and it should be, it should be something that should be spelled out because otherwise, what you're doing is allowing for it, because they'll say, "Well, we have a permit for it, so we have, we can do it." And they're just going to do it, unless you say they can't do it.
Well, I, I disagree. I think there's other provisions of the village code that come into play in that instance. But again, for the mayor's point, I don't want this to become a back and forth or a second public hearing. But I did want to advise the board as to those provisions because a member of the public had concern about that specific provision of the law.
What I will say, Matt, is to wrap this up before we move on to anybody else, that first of all, I appreciate your input. I appreciate your comments. I appreciate your materials. And, and I'm always willing to have a conversation with you, as I think you know by now, and please continue providing that input and disagree with us, disagree with me, whatever.
When are we going to raise the flags again? When are we raising the flag again?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Why is the flag at half-mast? We talked about this three weeks ago.
The president hasn't released the flags to not be at half-mast, and right now, there's an order in place for them to be at half-mast for 30 days for the passing of John Lewis.
You don't need an order to raise a flag. This is America. You raise a flag. I don't see what the problem is. But it really disappoints me when I drive through town and I see that. I'm going to let you know. Pissed about it.
I'm sorry you're disappointed, Matt, but we're going to move on. Thank you for your comments. Next, anybody else? Robin, Sandy? Excuse me. Craig or Joe?
Tim?
Neil?
Yes, I just want to make a couple of comments on the water protection overlay.
Please.
I think this has been something that started back in 2018. I'm glad to see that it has finally come up for a vote. I am not going, I don't know what the vote is going to be, but if it is approved tonight, which I hope it will be, I believe it's a very good law. A lot of work has gone into it. And if it is passed, I know that the Budna Interminister Water Council, all the members would be very interested in getting copies of the law, particularly our neighbors to the north in Cornwall, because if, if this law goes through there, they're going to be anticipating doing, doing their own. And I think this is an excellent law, and I thank the board for working on it and bringing it to the point of it's where it's going to be voted on tonight.
Thanks, Neil. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing nothing, we're going to move on with administrative business. So first up on administrative business, I need a motion and a second to accept receipt of the minutes of the meeting held on July 9th, 2020.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Gomez with the motion. Trustee Jacomazo with the second. That's the second. Got it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chris? Okay, so it's unanimous. Okay, approval of abstract. Need a motion and a second to approve abstract number four of 2020 containing vouchers 200216 through 200311 totaling $648,337.23.
I'll make the motion.
That was trustee Graziano with the motion. Trustee Eric with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have some budget modifications. So the first, we need a motion and a second to approve the modification to the fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget of the general fund totaling $43,893 as presented in writing by the village clerk.
Make that motion.
Trustee Gomez with the motion. Trustee Eric with the second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? How about I? Next up is a motion and a second for a modification to the fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget of the consolidated water fund totaling $10,325, again, as presented by Desiree.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Graziano with the motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Jacomazo with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Next, motion and a second to approve the modification to the fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget of the Water Six Andor Park Fund totaling $4,094 as presented by Desiree.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Gomez with the motion. Trustee Eric with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Need a motion and a second to approve the modification to the fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget of the consolidated sewer fund totaling $99,765. Trustee Gomez with the motion. Trustee Jacomazo with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Now we need a motion, last budget modification. Motion and a second to approve the modification to the fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget of sewer number one, Valley Ford, by increasing GV81, oh, excuse me, as read by, as presented by Desiree. I don't need to read that.
You have four down one? No, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, trustee Graziano with the motion. Trustee Eric with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Correct me if I'm wrong, Desiree, but that was to clean up the final budget, right? Make the modifications that we needed for the last fiscal year.
We usually do fiscal, budget modifications around budget time and again at the end of the fiscal year, and this now will close out the previous fiscal year.
Thank you very much. Okay, fire department equipment request. I need a motion and a second to approve fire department equipment request 2020-15 totaling approximately $5,463.75 for the purchase of a 30-inch Pro Bar for 525, 11 units of five gallons of foam for 521, a 200-pound Rescue Randy for rescue drills, five Vulcan, five Fire Vulcan LED lights, and one CO meter detector for car seven.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Eric?
I'll second it.
Trustee Jacomazo with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? How about I? Okay, moving along. Old business. Have a, we need a vote on introductory local law number one of 2018, which is the water quality protection overlay district. So the G M L response was received on June 22nd, 2020, and they stated that they found no evidence that significant intermunicipal or county-wide impacts would result from its approval. But they also commented, and this, I think other people will back me up on this, is pretty unusual. They also commented, commended, rather, the village for taking active steps to protect vital water resources through the use of a comprehensive zoning tool. So that was very nice of them to comment on that. Also, on June 19th, comments from the planning board were received. There were no other written comments received prior to the June 19th deadline. So with that said, we have two motions we need to do. I need a motion and a second to adopt the negative declaration for the issue pursuant to secret.
I'll make a motion.
It sounded like trustee Graziano, and I saw trustee Gomez's hand for the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. And now I'm very pleased to ask for a motion and a second to adopt local law number six of 2020 amending chapter 310 of the village code by creating subsection 31.4 entitled Water Quality Protection Overlay Districts.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Graziano as appropriate, and trustee Eric with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
What I, congratulations, everybody. That was a great effort. Oh, we need a roll for that.
Yes, thank you. Mayor Egan?
Aye.
Trustee Burke?
Aye.
Trustee Jacomazo?
Aye.
Trustee Gomez?
Aye.
Trustee Graziano?
Aye.
Okay, terrific. So now we need to vote on introductory local law number seven of 2020, Entity Disclosure. So the only written comments received since the public hearing were from the building inspector Gary Thomasberger on July 15th. There was no requirement to refer this either to the planning board or to the county for G M L review. We took action to declare this as a type-two action under secret on June 25th, and the public hearing was closed on July 9th. With all of that said, Kelly, considering the verbal and written comment received during the comment period and the changes we made, can you please summarize this for us? Or if you don't have any further comments, fine, too.
I don't have any further comments, but did you want me to respond to the board regarding the written comments that were received? I did send you an email about it. If you wanted me to go over it, I can do that.
Yeah, I think we probably should cover that. I just want to make sure we cover all the bases.
Sure. So you had received written comments that night of your meeting, and I just want to respond to some of those. These were from Mr. Zlada. So the first comment that he had referred to section 96-1.1, and he questioned how the term applicant is being used, saying that based on his reading, one can assume that applicant refers to the entity whose name appears on the application to the building department or the planning board. So the provision that's referenced doesn't exist. I, I think he meant 96-6.1 sub A, sub one. But that section doesn't actually use the term applicant, but any portion of this subsection A is simply the legislative intent for the provisions. It's not the law. However, to address the underlying issue that's brought up and kind of described more in the example that he provided, so that somebody can't say a member of an LLC is another LLC whose members are an LLC. so that somebody can't say a member of an LLC is another LLC whose members are an LLC or incorporation, things like that, that can actually be addressed by the form that has to be adopted for this entity disclosure law. It can be adopted in there and as I mentioned to the mayor earlier today, we can have a form prepared for you for your next meeting to address these comments. The second is that he had a concern under paragraph B two about projects where that have been sold, assigned or otherwise transferred, but there was no requirement at the membership of an entity who had received prior approval changes. The suggestion there is it's really unmanageable. There's no way to follow that. There's no way to know if there's changes in a membership after it's already gone through the approval process. And then there becomes no way to enforce it. So the purpose of the law is to determine whether there's any conflicts with the approving boards. And that if somebody was no longer before the board twenty years down the line and the membership of their LLC changes, that suggestion would go well beyond the purpose of this local law. Then the last, well, no, not the last comment. Second to last comment that was in this letter suggested that it wasn't a bad idea to request a copy of documentation that was submitted to the department of state. So the first, the the agency that you would ask for it for would be the division of corporations. But additionally, if you wanted to require these documents, it would be up to the board of trustees. It can be something that are required documents to be submitted with the form. So it could be addressed by the form. But even with that, the village isn't gonna be getting the informa, the information that that he's kind of seeking with this request. A lot of the entities, when you file these documents with the department of state and you make the articles of incorporation and articles of organization, things like that, they're created by an attorney. Oh, those attorneys, right? So you create, you create the LLC and then all of a sudden, you know, the members change. So you're gonna get an LLC's documents or a corporation's documents and it's gonna say one thing, but the members are really identified in private documents of the entity. So the information that the form would require, I think is gonna be sufficient. It's going to address the purposes of the law. Asking for these additional documents isn't gonna get you the information that you're ultimately seeking. And then last, he suggested that the village, town and other surrounding municipalities try to get the state representatives to fix this issue and do something along these lines. The village can try and do that, but it really doesn't relate to this underlying law. That would be taken up separately. So then I wanted to go over, Gary had also provided a memo and I just wanted to go over some of his comments. Once I stop having them at like size twenty five and go blind. So his first comment was recognizing that this local law changes chapter ninety six, which is building construction, and that is enforced by Gary. He's asking, saying he's gonna need some direction regarding the form and that there may be investigations. You know, who does he report these things to? Basically, like I said, we're gonna make a form for this board because the law says the form is approved by the board of trustees. And if there's, if Gary has any questions or anybody in the building department has any questions, they can always contact us with any questions that they have. But the law doesn't require any reporting information, that no report goes back to the board of trustees or goes back to the planning board. These forms come in, you know, if it's, if it's an application to the planning board, the planning board's gonna take a look at it. Gary's gonna take a look at it. There may be, you know, correspondence between the two, depending on which board it's with, but there's no reporting requirements.
So it's a bit of a checks and balances for us in that we can review those documents that can be foiled, et cetera.
Absolutely, yes. His second question was, will the village board need to approve all of the applications for building permits, planning board applications and ZBA applications prior to their issuance? And that's no. Andrew's looking at me like, well, why do we wanna do that? Yeah, it's not, that's not required by this local law. The only time that the village board would get involved in looking at something like that was under subsection B sub four sub little, little one. And that says for other minor improvements to dwellings or residential lots with an existing CO not specifically noted in this subsection authorized building inspector after consultation with and determination by the board of trustees. So it's, it's a long shot that it's gonna come before you, but should it, it would fall into that, but the odds of you seeing something are very rare. His third question was, will each contractor and subcontractor that's listed on the building department applications be required to file separate building permit applications? And no, they won't be. The, these forms are for the owners and the entities that are applying for the approvals or the permits. They're not for the contractor and subcontractor unless the contractor is the owner. You know, it's, it's really to make sure, again, like I said, that there's no conflict between the boards and the applicants. He suggested raising the exemption for residential garages from five hundred square feet to fifteen hundred square feet to conform to the zoning code for accessory structures. That's up to you. If you do wanna make that change, I think that it would be a substantive change that would require it being on your desk for another, another seven days and you could adopt it at your next meeting, but it's something to consider. There's no requirement that that match. But he's just raising it to try and have consistency. And then his last comment is, I think it should be clarified that an applicant with property in single ownership is exempt. And, you know, I talked about this one with Rick actually, because I wasn't sure what he was trying to say, to get to. Rick didn't either. We weren't sure what he meant because if a property is owned by a single person, like a John Smith or a Kelly Naughton, that person is not required to fill out a disclosure form. They're not an entity. If, if there is this form, it would literally say, okay, my name is Kelly Naughton. I don't have any, you know, now I'm a single person. So I don't know where he was going with that question. But those were my comments on their responses. I didn't know if anybody had additional comments, but I didn't want to leave those unanswered for the board.
I appreciate that, Kelly. So first, thank you for that detailed explanation. I also wanna thank Mr. Zlata for his detailed submission in writing, which really helped us out with regard to understanding what it is that he'd like to see. I have just the one question about one of the Gary, one of Gary's comments with the five hundred versus fifteen hundred. Other than maintaining consistency with village code, did you, I didn't see anything, any other reasons put forth for that, did you?
No.
Okay.
That's.
So that's really the only thing as a board that we would need to consider if we wanted to change that to be consistent with the code. We would need to let it sit for another, well, until the next meeting. If not, then we could go ahead and vote on that tonight. So before I ask for a motion to pass that law, I wanna ask the board members to chime in on what they'd like to see happen with that. Andrew?
I'm okay moving forward, as is.
Tara?
As is.
Chris, I, I saw you shake your head before, so I assume you wanna move forward, right?
Fifteen hundred square feet.
About a square pizza?
Fifteen hundred square feet is a small house, it's not a garage.
Alright, so then we'll leave it alone and move forward. So with that said, can I please have a motion in a second to adopt local law number seven of twenty twenty, amending chapter ninety six, building construction of the village code to implement an entity disclosure law?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Roll call, please.
Mayor Egan?
Aye.
Trustee Burke?
Aye.
Trustee Jacomaza?
Aye.
Trustee Gomez?
Aye.
Trustee Graziano?
Aye.
Terrific, thank you. So now we need an authorization for me to sign a renewal agreement with HDR. So I need a motion in a second to authorize the mayor to sign a master short form agreement for professional services with HDR for various projects they consult with, with the village board.
Oh.
Trustee Gomez with the. I'm sorry?
How long is the agreement for? Is this short term? But what time?
You know, I just had that on my.
For one year. They try and update that annually. The main change between it, between the agreement from now and last year, and I thought Mike was gonna stay on, but I guess he left, in case there were any questions. The difference, I think, was the pay scale.
Okay.
So was that a motion, Jesus?
I just wanted to know the time also.
Okay, I wasn't. Okay, thank you. Can we get a second, please?
I'll make a second.
Trustee Jacomaza with the second. Any discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How about I? Okay, so now we have some new business. Proposed changes to building department fees. So Andrew, trustee Jacomaza had put in a lot of effort along with trustee Gomez with the building department in analyzing and suggesting changes to the building department fees. But before we move on with this, and I need to get this question answered so that Kelly knows which direction we can go in. We need to decide if we want chapter one forty three of the village code updated to reflect the new fees so as not to have the applicants contact the village for each application so that the fees would be listed in code as they are currently.
Oh, they're not.
Beg your pardon?
No, they're not.
They're not?
No.
I misread that then.
Yes. You, you, I'm sorry, not to interrupt you, I apologize. Several years ago, and if the board wants to change this, they can. In order to change fees, you used to have to adopt a law to do so. And they felt, the board at the time felt that that was a time consuming thing to go through just to change fees. So board then, I think it's one forty three dash four of the code, if I remember correctly, says that you can change the fees by resolution when you review them annually, which you do at your reorg.
That was the question. Do we wanna do it this way, which I think is the, I think yes is the answer to that question. I'm seeing that, okay.
Yeah, so my only, my only question, and Desiree had answered it, was that you do do it every year. You do it annually if you have changes. I just didn't know if the board wanted, you know, what's in there currently to reflect what's there and then you keep doing it annually. That was my only question. But if you don't want to, that's fine. There's no requirement. As long as you do it by resolution, you're set.
Well, we do it by resolution now and then we affirm that at the semi annual in January, right?
You do it in every June.
We don't do this as part of the semi annual reorg? I thought that was there, okay.
I don't, it's, well, you, you just did it in June.
Yeah.
I'm thinking.
Yeah, I don't think we do it in January.
Right, no, January is just because new board members come in, so you do just anything relating to that issue. But your actual reorg is beginning of your fiscal year, which will be June.
Okay, terrific. So we answered those questions. So before I ask for a motion in a second on this, Andrew and or Jesus, do you wanna mention anything specific about this? Do you wanna talk about it in any way?
Me? No, I just, I wanna thank Gary Thomasberger, who sat down with me and both our planning and zoning board chairmans, who I also sat down with to go over some of this. So it's, it's, it's basically approved by all parties involved. So it's all it takes is us now and that's it. So.
Great, terrific. Okay, terrific. So with that said then, looking for, hang on, looking for a motion in a second. I'm sorry, I lost my place.
Well, while you're looking, I just wanna verify, is this going to effect immediately, which means as of tomorrow morning, or are you making it effective August first? I need, I need an effective date.
That's a good point. Does this have to, well, this is a resolution, not a local law, so it doesn't have to.
I just need to let the board, the village, the, the.
August first, I mean, give him a little time.
First, I think August first would be fine.
Any objections, Kelly?
We, no, that's fine.
You have to revise all of their permit applications and what.
Give him a little time to, and you know, right, we got vacations coming up and other stuff, so August first at the earliest, I would think. Alright, so August first. So then I'd like a motion in a second to adopt the new fees related to permits in the building department effective August first, twenty twenty.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Jacomaza, trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What I, again, great job, guys. Thank you. Okay, we have a liquor license application for Rushmore Estates. Notice was received on July second, twenty twenty that Rushmore Estates LLC located at fourteen Castleton Drive in Highland Mills is applying for a liquor license from the New York State Division of Alcoholic Beverages Control State Liquor Authority. A letter was sent to the police department, as we usually do, to determine if there's any reason why the village should object to this application being approved. And they stated they found no concerns that should be reported. Therefore, I'm going ahead and instructing village clerk Poffin to send a letter to the state liquor authority to that effect. We have another resolution. Thank you, Kelly, for bringing this to our attention. We have, this is to determine the applicability of the village of Woodbury's zoning laws to Curious Joel's plan to construct a water filtration plant within the village of Woodbury. From what I understand, this is similar to what was constructed at the bottom of Ridge Road a couple of years ago. Kelly, anything we have to discuss before we move to a vote on this?
No, I think as long as everybody has reviewed it and that if there's any questions, the discussion I think is therein. So if it's read, I know Desiree, it's quite long. You're reading it.
Yeah, I'm gonna read it, so.
Okay.
So I'm gonna look for a motion in a second to adopt the following resolution, determine applicability of Woodbury zoning laws to Curious Joel's plan to construct a water filtration plant within the village of Woodbury. Skipping past the whereas is going right to the now therefore part. Now therefore, after due deliberation, it is hereby resolved that the village of Woodbury Board of Trustees, a municipal entity legally entitled to conduct the Monroe Inquiry, does hereby find in accordance with the relevant balancing factors, one, Curious Joel is not a legally superior jurisdiction to the village of Woodbury and therefore Curious Joel is not entitled to any preference regarding general municipal powers in its project. Two, there is no express grant of legislative authority to Curious Joel provided it, providing it immunity from Woodbury zoning laws. Although village law section eleven dash eleven twenty six provides for certain exemptions from consents regarding the layer laying of pipe and necessary utterances. Did I say that right? Close enough, okay. For a connection to the New York State aqueduct system, upon information and belief, Curious Joel has not yet secured the necessary approvals and easements for such connection, and in any event, the exempted consents do not apply to local zoning laws. Further, village sec, village law section eleven dash eleven ten only provides for the basic legal authority for Curious Joel to lay and repair pipelines outside of its own village boundaries. It does not provide for any exception from local zoning laws in those areas outside of its own village borders. Nor does the court decision in town of Woodbury, at all village of Curious Joel, Orange County Index Number two eight seven seven dash two zero one three provide any relief to Curious Joel in this regard. Three, the construction of Curious Joel's water filtration plant is for a governmental purpose, but not a governmental purpose that benefits the village of Woodbury or its residents. Here is Joel's intended and unnecessary placement of its water treatment plant outside of its own village borders to adversely affect the village of Woodbury and its residents while posing no inconvenience or impact to the residents of Curious Joel, even though Curious Joel has the ability to use or procure property within its own village limits for the water filtration plant. Four, enforcement of the Woodbury zoning laws will have an insignificant effect on Curious Joel. Curious Joel simply has to make application to and appear before the Woodbury Planning Board for a special permit and site plan for a portion of which was submitted with its July sixth, twenty twenty letter to the planning board. This is a simple process posing no undue delay or interference with Curious Joel's project. Five, there will be a significant impact upon the legislative, the legitimate local interests of Woodbury as this property is located on a main road and within a residential district in the village. Any structure erected on this property will be highly visible. This use needs to be developed in a manner that is compatible with development in the area to the greatest practical extent as provided for in Woodbury zoning laws. And six, Curious Joel has not provided any alternative sites for their project in their own village or in less restrictive zoning areas in Woodbury or alternative methods of providing the needed improvements. The potential availability of alternative sites for these improvements, including locating the water filtration plant within Curious Joel and alternative designs weighs against exempting Curious Joel from the Woodbury zoning laws and land use regulatory authority. And it is further resolved that based upon the above noted findings and in accordance with the common law weighing of these findings I set forth in the matter of county of Monroe, county of Monroe, excuse me, and notwithstanding Curious Joel's position to the contrary, Curious Joel is hereby required to comply with the village of Woodbury zoning laws and land use regulatory authority for its proposed, proposed water filtration plant and related improvements in the village of Woodbury and is thereby required to apply for and receive a special permit and site plan approval from the village planning board. Next time, you're doing it, thanks.
Sorry.
So again, I need a motion in a second for that resolution, please.
I'll make the motion.
That was trustee Graziano with the motion. Have a second. Trustee Burek with the second. Any discussion or questions?
I, I just do wanna weigh in on one point that so the public is aware that this had come up and, cause I think the board saw that a letter came in. Previously, they had, Curious Joel had constructed a pump station and a chlorine plant. The pump station was on Ridge Road. The chlorine plant was on this same property on Seven Springs Road and submitted another letter about this water filtration plant and said, here's, you know, provided a portion of an application and said, well, we've done the balancing test from county of Monroe, which is a case that the court says you have to balance these factors and said, we balanced it, you know, and our balancing says that we don't have to do that. We don't have to comply with your local zoning. So this was, came in and so the resolution that was prepared says that you have balanced these factors. these factors, and that they do have to comply with your zoning. That was all I wanted to say. Sorry for the length of that, air.
No worries. That was very well crafted, I appreciate that, in all seriousness.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, any further discussion before we vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
How about I? We don't need a roll call for that, right?
No.
All right, great. So that concludes regular business. We will now move out to the public for public comment. We'll hit the unmute all button, allow anybody to weigh in. Mr. Higgins?
Again, I would like you to raise the flag. I don't think that's a lot to ask, it's been down for three months. It's been like since April. April.
Anything else?
So? No.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, have a good night.
Yeah, thank you, you too. Robin, Sandy, Neil?
Yes. I watched the town board meeting last week, and supervisor Palermo said that the town was going to submit to the village a settlement agreement for the lawsuit. He listed that the town would be willing to sign the deed for the 112 acres or whatever at the reservoir. The town want, wanted a, was proposing a subdivision of the approximate six acres that the village had, uh, basically received in exchange for the 112 acres. They wanted to subdivide that. And also, I think there was something where the, they wanted the village to, uh, pay $60,000 approximately to the town for, I believe, a payment on a bond. To me, it didn't sound like a settlement, because it would be, I'm going to, yes, I will agree to sign a deed that will give me 112 acres, and I want two things in addition to. And to me, it didn't exactly sound like a settlement, and I was wondering if the village had had a chance that they'd receive that offer?
Okay.
Or not?
I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, no, that's, I, I mean, just, just, just to me, that doesn't seem like it's equitable in any way, and it's gone so far at this point that it's, I mean, so much tax dollars have been spent on the residents of Woodbury, and I believe it is, it's going to, it's on the court calendar to be held, and personally, I mean, for myself, and I hope many residents, we'd like to see a court decision on this, rather than a settlement of any type, because there could be any change through five years from now, and, and a board makeup, and all of a sudden, uh, everything is opened up again.
Okay, so let me respond to, well, all of that. And I'll start with the last part first, the bond payment. That bond payment was agreed to by the then-village board last year, of which three of us were there, and I think the other two were actually in the room, when we had a joint meeting with the town board, and I don't remember the meeting date at this point, but I think it was in April of last year, maybe even March. Because of the way in which the highway department had transferred over, that was proposed as one of the potential settlement points, there were four of which two were agreed to, and we had collectively agreed to that. So that part carried over into any discussions that we had. So as I've mentioned in the past, in the past few months, that is, early, very early in the year, right after the holidays, I sat down with supervisor Palermo several times to discuss ending this lawsuit at the request of many residents and that my personal desire to get rid of the lawsuit. We really didn't get very far until one morning after we were done discussing everything, and I'm just gonna lay it all out there, because, I mean, it's pretty much out there now, so I'm gonna lay it all out there so everyone understands, and our board is fully aware of all of this. So, he had suggested a small piece of the land where the highway department is be given to the town, be transferred to the town for the purposes of a parking lot for the senior center. So I did not know exactly which parcel he was speaking of, so we took a ride up there, we met with Rob, and he showed me which parcel he was talking about. So I looked to Rob, I said, what about it? That piece of land is being used to store some waste pipe and not much of anything else right now, it's just east, excuse me, south of the salt shed, for anyone that's familiar with that property. And it's directly across the access road from the senior center parking lot. His intended use is to pave that over for additional parking for the senior center. So I thought it sounded reasonable, I didn't have a big problem with it, but I then brought it to the rest of our board while he brought it to the rest of his board. That became part of a potential discussion, or excuse me, a potential settlement, along with the bond payment. As far as the signing of the deed, all of the properties that were transferred would stay the properties of the respective municipalities. In other words, we'd have the highway department, he'd have, the town rather would have the parkland. So that's the proposed settlement. Now this, as you, as you pointed out, this is on the trial calendar, it was postponed a couple times, but the last time it was postponed was because there was a potential settlement in the works. So as it stands right now, their resolution was to present us with this series of documents, with this, with this proposal. We, of course, have not received anything yet, they're still working on the survey for what it is that they're intending, and once we receive that, we'll pass it along to council, we'll pass it along to the engineers. Once we're satisfied on our end that the deal measures up to what we thought it was going to measure up for, there will be a public vote on that, on behalf of, I imagine, both boards, but I can't speak to the town board, we intend to vote on it. And obviously, any and all comments with regard to that is welcome.
Just to piggyback on that, there is a court conference that I just received notice of next week, and this, that will be what's discussed. It's not for a decision, it's basically to check the status of that, and it's not an in-person, they've got special court proceedings.
I would think not.
Yeah.
So that's where we stand with that. I hope I answered your question, yeah.
I, yeah, I didn't realize, I, I do know where the proposed, I guess, new lot, or what was, because we received a map, as per a FOIL request, we received a copy of a map. So the map apparently, and it was done, I guess, so it should be available to the village, it was, I think it was, uh, 78 or something.
We all independently had gone up there after we all discussed this, and we all have a good idea of what this is supposed to look like. Their surveyor, or, excuse me, their engineer is supposed to be staking it out, and we're all supposed to be able to see exactly what it looks like, and we're going to get it validated and so on. So the devil's in the details, of course, but that was the proposed settlement, and that's, that's where we are.
What, what, what would prevent the town from coming back and wanting?
Oh.
A cup, a cup, another two acres or something else because?
Because.
Of that, along, because it is that area back, back at the salt shed.
Yeah.
Between 105 and the salt shed, is, it, if, there's a change in the town board and they want, or the village board, and all of a sudden, somebody wants to go back, like has happened now.
Absolutely. We have assisted on protections for that, everything, this would be, Kelly, can you give me the term that would apply to this situation where nothing else could ever happen with this? There was a specific legal term.
Of course, now that you said it, I just lost it. I was ready.
Come on, Kelly.
I know, just as he said it, I unmuted myself and was like, I'll get back to you, but we wouldn't, so that that wouldn't happen, don't worry.
Yeah, that's absolutely not gonna happen.
Next time I should have just interrupted and been like...
You know, it's on the tip of my tongue, too, I mean.
Sorry.
I'm old enough, I could do, I can do that, I can get away with it, but Kelly...
I have aged unbelievably, Neil, in the last three months, I'm telling you.
Yeah, and, and COVID really delayed all of this as well, it's really pushed everything back.
Yeah.
Okay, thank, thank you, Tim.
You're welcome, Neil. Any other comments from you and Mrs. Kraus?
No, I, I do, I, thank you, I know it's an agenda item, but thank you that the, the whole board for approving the water protection.
You're welcome. Thank you for your part in that, you know, when you were still on the board. All right, I'm sorry, did you say Robin had nothing?
No, I'm good, Tim, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Robin. Sandy?
Um, yes, I, I too would like to thank the board for passing the water quality protection overlay district, it means a lot to the planning board in our review. I think I'm actually, back in 2017, there was an application that we were, the board, the planning board was concerned about, that's why we wrote the, had our attorney write to the village board to consider, you know, coming up with this law. To piggyback on what, what Neil was saying, and you said it accurately, devil is in the details, um, I believe part of the town's lawsuit was that they wanted the village to reimburse them for all fees and expenditures, and so I just want to double-check and make sure that that is not part of this settlement as well, because...
That is not part of this settlement as well.
Right, we don't have an official settlement agreement yet, what that was, and the resolution by the town board was just what they proposed to include.
Right.
So we would have to review all of the terms that they put in that, because those are really what they're calling the substantive terms, but if they put something in like what you're referencing, well, the village would consider that a substantive term.
Right. What I can tell you is that based on our discussions, you know, we, we did talk about that, and we agreed that that wasn't going to be part of it, and this would be the full and, and total agreement, what I just described.
Okay, so done with the surveying fees or, or any of the money spent, but I would hope, and I would really request that this board make part of the settlement, that both the village and the town has to be very honest with the public in letting us know exactly how much this has cost all of us taxpayers.
Well, I know that we as a board have always, I'm not gonna speak for everybody, but I'll know that, I can say that I've always expected our board to be full, fully forthright with regard to what we spent on this lawsuit, and, you know, I would hope that the town board would do the same.
Well, can, I, can it be part of the, the settlement agreement that it has to be fully disclosed?
I, I, I mean, obviously, anything...
It's usually part of a settlement agreement, that's information that would be able to be foiled by the public to the town, some of the details of that would obviously be redacted as privileged, but the, that's not something that you would include in a settlement agreement.
Okay. Is there a reason why not?
It really has nothing to do with the terms of the lawsuit and why it was brought.
Okay, but it's still coming out of our pockets, but, okay, I'm not gonna argue with it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but the intent of the lawsuit would be prevent any, well, one of the intents of the lawsuit, besides putting us to bed, would be to prevent the, the expenditure of any additional funds by either municipality, so. But, yeah, I understand what you're saying, I get it. All right, thanks, Sandy. Mr. Zlada, Mr. Brady, excuse me.
Uh, yeah, Tim, just to piggyback on what Sandy was saying, in, in regards to disclosure, I know in the past when I foiled the town records for what's been spent today, basically what we've been dividing, myself as well as others, is these legal expenses. I would also like to see full transparency on any other related expenses, engineering expenses, surveys, whatever money was actually spent to prepare the lawsuit and to carry it out.
Can't disagree with, I can't argue with that, absolutely, I fully agree. Anything else?
That's it for me, Tim.
All right, thanks, Joe. Craig?
No, sir, thanks.
All right, is there anybody that I missed? Anybody else have anything they'd like to say before we move on?
I just want to add with regards to the FOIL request for expenditures, up until very recently, it has only been legal expenses. The engineer was only brought in, I guess, a couple of months ago to start doing the, looking at the highway thing, and I don't believe we've received a bill for that yet.
You told it was the town, not the village.
Correct, the town, the village has only had legal expense, expenses, there has been no other consultant expenses. The town, the engineer only just got involved with regards to the subdivision of the property, he wasn't involved previously.
Okay. I think that wraps up public comment, let's move on to board member comment. The first thing I was actually gonna talk about was what we just discussed, so I'm not gonna rehash where we are with the lawsuit. But I do want, and, and the next thing that I wanted to talk about was something that Mr. Higgins brought up, and we did touch on a little bit, but I want to go on with my comments for this. So first, I, I just want to update everyone on our efforts with the DEC regarding the space side applications, and I say applications, there's two of them. So prior to all deadlines, as I mentioned before, I submitted written comment along with a memo prepared by the village engineer. This written comment outlined several areas of concern with the current applications. After that submission, I had a subsequent video conference with our engineer and attorney. The result of that discussion was that our next move should be a meeting with the DEC. On Thursday, July 16th, I, along with our attorney and engineers, had that video conference with several representatives from the DEC, including the deputy permit administrator, Rebecca Chris, who's been handling this all along. So during that discussion, we first amplified our concerns about the applications on behalf of the village, especially the expansion. As a team, we discussed water supply and quality, impacts to the aquifer, drawdown effects on neighboring residential and municipal wells, noise, traffic, operating hours, and several other issues. Specifically with regard to our water supply, I pointed out the large amount of water that was being pumped out of the ground, with the majority of that water flowing downstream as quote-unquote return, which not only does not benefit us at all, but has potential dangerous impacts to our long-term supply by pumping out on a monthly basis, almost exactly what we pump out for the village supply at the same time. I also offered a potential solution, I suggested that Spacside could possibly work with us to reclaim some of that water and potentially provide us with additional supply that could solve our water problems for several years at least. This work would require, this would require rather work on both of our parts, but conserving the existence, existing supply, in my opinion, is far better than allowing millions of gallons per month to just be wasted. The DEC told us, not only did they appreciate our concern and suggestions, but that they would accept written comment from, up, from us at any time regardless of submission deadlines with regard to any of these projects. So as a, as a board, and, and especially our consultants, we're gonna stay on top of this issue and, and provide feedback as things change. So regarding the COVID-19 pandemic, we're closely monitoring not only our efforts, but the numbers in other states around the country. As everybody knows from watching whatever flavor of news you like to watch, things aren't so great in the lower part of the country, and that red line is creeping up. So I've been working with department heads to monitor travel with an eye toward compliance with the governor's executive orders, specifically in the areas of testing and monitoring. Just today, effective tomorrow, we began a new procedure that will protect not only our employees, but our residents that meet with any village employees. We're gonna continue to work with our partners at the local county and state levels to keep our residents and visitors safe and healthy. That's it, thank you. So let's move on to the end of what is usually the day, is trustee Graziano?
I think, first of all, thank you all for attending tonight. I'm glad we have accomplished phase four of our reopening, and have kept the numbers low, we need to remain diligent. While we're doing great, our numbers are staying low, and we're holding our own against this extremely aggressive virus. However, the weather is hot, temperatures are poor, and we're all along for normalcy in our lives. Our children are looking forward to being with their friends and resuming the social interactions that will help them as they enter adulthood. We need to remain vigilant, wear our masks, social distance where we can, and treat each other with respect. Only by working together can we beat back this pandemic and have our lives returned to normal. Second, I'd like to ask all of our wonderful community members to support our local restaurants and businesses. They are hurting from the months of closures, as well as the very cumbersome rules they need to follow in our reopening. We want them there to support us in the best of times, we need to help them survive what has been the worst of times. The weather is cooperating, so take advantage of the outdoor dining options and show them how much they mean to us. They need us now more than ever, so let's show them the support they deserve. Lastly, as I alluded to earlier, as this pandemic has dragged on and the weather's become hotter, tempers have seemed to flare. We are a community that I am proud to live in, and we are better than some of what I've seen transpire lately. We are a community who strives to volunteer and help each other out, and that is what makes us truly special. Before you write that post, scream that insult, think twice about what you want to present. Cooler heads need to prevail, and we need to come together now more than ever. So please be kind to your fellow humans, help your neighbors, and remember, a kind word or a good deed paid forward is a priceless investment in our community. Be well, stay safe, work together to live together, and good night.
Thanks, Chris. Trustee Gomez?
Hi, um, just wanna make a comment about a post on Facebook, and say, Woodbury, that's made about me. So, the original post that was made about the animal shelter that I made was to praise the work that was done by the Knights of Columbus, the highway department, and the community as a whole. There was no political intentions involved... There was no political intentions involved in making the post. We were under the assumption that the money which was raised at the fundraiser was used in making all the new improvements, which were many. I apologize for any misunderstandings this might have caused. However, I will not apologize for praising the Knights of Columbus for the great work that they have done and continue to do, as well as emphasize the time the community provide and provided that day and has so often done for this whole community, as well as the many, many hours our village highway department has done and continues to do so for such a great cause in helping that animal shelter to become such a great institution in our town. Now, I hope in the future we can try and work better as a community. So together, we do not point out the negative things in life, especially on social media platforms. We should look to make Woodbury one strong and loving community. And we, myself and Andrew, we weren't politicians. We don't plan to continue to ever be politicians. We want to be part of this community and help this community along and help it become the Woodbury that we all move to have. We want to continue growing and becoming such a loving and community that where we can stay in love and live with all our neighbors in harmony. If there's a problem that you have, like you said before, we're always here for you, and we're available whenever you need to. And if you misunderstand something, by all means, pick up a phone, call us, and we'll be here for you. So continue to stay strong, Woodbury, and please thank everyone you can, especially all the essential workers, who sometimes take it for granted that they're there and they provide the services that we do. So just take a moment to say hi or thank you or wave to them, let them know. And this is why we make posts like this. Let them know, especially now in the pandemic. We don't see them as often. We're not out on the streets, so we take the chance we can and try to be positive. And unfortunately, some people take it wrong, and for that I do apologize, but I will never apologize for all the work that this whole community does as a whole. Thank you and have a good night.
Thanks, Jesus. Trustee Bjork?
Thank you, Tim. Thank you all the members for watching and attending the meeting. To echo the sentiments of trustee Graziano and trustee Gomez, lately I've really had to remind myself why we do on this board what we do. And I am being completely honest and transparent here. The role of village trustee is not one that any of us take lightly, and we do this not, and we do this not because we have an abundance of free time, but because we truly care and want to help. There is so much animosity that we see every day, and I'm not just talking about animosity between strangers. It's also between neighbors. I consider every single person I meet my neighbor and will treat them with respect, even if they themselves lack it. I believe that putting one's pride in differences aside and truly putting in the work for the betterment of our community is what takes courage, and that's where the hard work lies. We are all just human beings following different paths, hopefully sharing in the common goal of making changes that have positive, long-lasting impacts on the place we call home. For many of us, we have embraced this role to the best of our abilities, and we have offered each of our individual talents to the residents of Woodbury to make Woodbury stronger. I would like to conclude with this. I would much rather make someone's day and lift them up than try to crush their spirit and be divisive just to prove a point. In a world full of animosity and division, I would rather be the bridge that unifies us despite our differences. I will choose the path less traveled each and every single time, and I am proud to sit alongside members of this village board who I know will always do the same. On that note, thank you everyone for attending again. Thank you to the members of this board. Stay safe and be well.
Thanks, Tara. And last but not least, trustee Jaka Mazza?
I'm going to, I'm going to go in a different direction, but maybe it falls within the framework of what my fellow trustees have talked about. This past Friday, we lost one of the great civil rights leaders in our history, in John Lewis. George Congressman Lewis lost his battle with pancreatic cancer yesterday. He was among the original 13 Freedom Riders, the black and white activists who challenged segregated interstate travel in the South in 1961. He was a founder and early leader of the Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee, which organized lunch counter sit-ins. John Lewis was one of the Big Six of the Civil Rights Movement and helped organize the March on Washington. John Lewis was also on the front lines of the bloody campaign to end Jim Crow laws. He was leader of the Civil Rights Movement, who fought segregation and a champion of change for equality to the very end. May his strength and determination continue to inspire all of us as we move our country forward during these most challenging times. I want to bring that up because he was a man who was peacefully trying to make changes so that we all get along. And unfortunately, in today's world that we live in, sometimes we're considered either blue or red. We've kind of forgotten how to actually express our viewpoints and have differing viewpoints, and that's okay. That really is okay. I'm a strong believer in if they go low, we go high. And I will continue to stress that because I've said over and over again, and I've said it with my fellow trustees, we are desperately trying to bring this community together. It's unfortunate that people feel that they have to lower themselves to that point to look to divide this community. And I will pray for them. I really will. It is a sad state that Woodbury is currently in. But I want to thank my fellow trustees. We continue to just push along, push along, push along, and trying to do the work that we were voted in to do. So I want to thank you. I want to thank all the people that reached out to myself and Jesus, which were a lot after yesterday's Facebook post. So I want to thank you all for coming tonight, and that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Desiree? Nope. And Kelly already reached out to me and said she doesn't have anything either. So I will ask the board, I don't have anything for an attorney-client session. Does anybody have anything? That they want to, you know, while we have Kelly and for an attorney-client session, or do you want to just move to adjourn?
I have a couple of things I'd like to bring up.
Oh, okay. So we will have an attorney-client session after adjournment then. Okay. So with that said, can I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, trustee Gomez, trustee Bjork with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
How about I? All right, thank you and good night, everybody.
Tim, is there a separate link?
There isn't. I'm going to stop recording on.